Everybody on? We are recording. My name is John Daly. I'm the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Wednesday, April 22 at 3:00 in the afternoon. And while we're under executive order, I know it's a little different. We are broadcasting over WCO T and also online at www.talgov.com. And as long as we're under the executive order, we'll be conducting the business of the city of Tallahassee virtually over this platform. First of all, it's good to see the Tallahassee family. Thank you so much for everything that y'all are doing. Glad to know that everybody is staying safe during these uncertain times. And with that, we will move straight into the meeting. First and foremost, I'd like to ask Commissioner Dr. Elaine Bryant, if you wouldn't mind providing a quick invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear God, we come right now to thank you for this another day. We thank you for your protection. We thank you, oh God, for the assignment that you've given to each of us. We pray, oh God, that you will use us as instruments of your service to do your will. We pray for the city of Tallahassee, Florida. Pray, oh God, for your protection. We pray for those who have not, that those of us that do have will be a blessing to them. We pray now that as we move into this meeting, that you will guide our thoughts, our decision making, and that all will glorify you. Send us out for you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Now, folks, I don't know if you have an American flag in front of you. And if you don't, then please place it in your mind. But if you will join me as well in the pledge of allegiance, that would be fantastic. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Let's get right into the meeting. We have not a very long meeting today, and we have a public hearing at 5:00. So Harold, I'm going to ask you and the city manager to be prepared that if we do finish the business of the city a little early before 5:00, what will be our procedures electronically with our computers before we come back? So let me give you that heads up as is. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we do. We've added a public safety update to be provided by TPD Chief Lawrence Revel. That's item 1107. We've also updated the attachments to items 702, 1303, and added an attachment to item 1306. Finally, in item 1303, the name of the PUD has been updated to reflect Parkway Commerce. It was previously written as Precine. Those are the only updates.
Excellent. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we will move on. Do we have any presentations today, Mr.?
No, sir.
Do we have any announcements today, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, no announcements.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, I know that you are on the phone. And once again, your office has done a tremendous job gathering all public comment in regards to this city commission meeting. What I will ask is at each individual item, I will ask if there is public comment, and if you will just simply state if there is that has been placed in the record, then how many people have commented? So moving on, we are on item number 6.01, appearances before the city commission by appointed boards and committees and other governments. 6.01 is the acceptance of the fiscal year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. City Manager, I will turn it back over to you.
Mr. Mayor, our auditor Dennis Sutton will introduce Mr. Matt Hansard.
I'm sorry. I see this right here in front of me. Dennis, I apologize for that, sir. It is all yours.
No problem. Item 6.01 is the presentation of the city's 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFR. It recommends acceptance of the CAFR as presented. But I did want to take just a brief moment because I feel it's important to recognize a tremendous amount of effort that was required by both Financial Services Division and the CPA firm that conducted the audit, Moore Stevens Lovelace. As I'm sure you remember, last year, we retained a new CPA firm to conduct our audit. And every time there's a new auditor, it takes a lot of work on both the part of Financial Services and the firm to get that audit done. But also last year, we got a late start on the audit because of problems finalizing the contract with that firm. But I did want to recognize that both firms really, both really stepped up to the plate and got this audit done in a great way. Colonel Grif, the chair of the Audit Committee, sends her apologies that she couldn't be here to make the presentation because she has one last class in her semester this year. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Hansard, member of the Audit Committee and the prior chair of the committee.
Excellent. Matt, thank you so much.
Matt, are you there? Okay. Okay. Well, with that. He's there.
He's muted, it looks like.
Yeah.
Oh, well, with that.
Well, with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, for acceptance of the CAFR.
Let me ask you real quick, were there any major findings of the Audit Committee that you would like to highlight above and beyond what is in the report?
There were a couple of new findings this year that hadn't been identified previously. I think there were, I believe there were a total of seven audit findings in the prior year. Five of those had been completely resolved by Financial Services Division. Two of it, which were partially addressed and carried forward some aspects of those. So the firm repeated those. And then there were two new issues that management has reported they have a plan in place that should address both of those and be resolved next year.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment to enter into the record on 6.01?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to my colleagues, and we'll take as much time as we need on all issues. Do we have any comment or questions from Mr. Sutton? Seeing no comment.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank Dennis and his team for providing such a comprehensive financial annual report. And I look forward to using it as we go forward this year to make sure if there are anything that we find that we need to do differently, that we will. But kudos to the team.
Very well said, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment with that, I will take the motion to accept the report from the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Been seconded by Commissioner Matlow, I believe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone in opposition? It passes 5-0. Thank you. We are now on the consent agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, no items have been pulled. The consent includes items 701, 702, 703. And we're seeking your approval on these. I'd be happy to read the titles if you would like. Move acceptance of the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments to enter into the record on the consent?
No, sir.
Excellent. Seeing no further questions or comments. Those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye. All those opposed? It passes unanimously, 5-0. That is the end of the consent agenda. We have nothing to come before us under 9.01. We do not have any new introduction of ordinances today. Madam Attorney, correct? Correct. We are now under policy formation and direction. We are on item 11.01, the approval of the General Dynamics lease amendment. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This item seeks your approval for a lease amendment for General Dynamics, a local or a worldwide manufacturing firm that has a local presence in Tallahassee. The city of Tallahassee owns the facility in which they operate. It's approximately a 90,000 square foot building in the Commonwealth Center. And their lease is set to expire in May of this year with an option to extend. The General Dynamics Land Systems Division is working to add a new manufacturing component to their Tallahassee facility, which includes the investment of approximately $1 million in new equipment. The new manufacturing line, if realized, will create 13 new full-time positions with annual salaries totaling almost $800,000. General Dynamics has requested a lease modification, which would allow them to amortize portions of the equipment cost and employment investment over time. This modification will also extend the renewal options to include a total of seven years. So work to retain General Dynamics in its entire manufacturing operation. The lease payments over the first five years of the proposed term would equal approximately what the four-year possible extension is today, again, being seven years in total if fully exercised. Staff recommends your approval of this lease amendment. Wayne Tetter, Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter is with us. He can answer questions as well as our Director of Real Estate, Robert Culverhouse.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment to be entered into the record?
There are no comments.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments for the City Manager or the Assistant City Manager on 11.01?
Move acceptance of staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson, thank you. It has been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for option number one, staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been properly seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any further comment? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Number 11.02, please, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the acceptance of a federal grant from the FTA that was created by the CARES Act, one of the early actions of Congress. It is seeking your approval to accept the grant of approximately $9.7 million. These funds are provided to Star Metro to prevent and prepare for the dollars that were spent preparing for the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The funding is provided at 100% with no local match required. And again, we're seeking your approval to accept these funds. I'm sorry, Commissioner. Our Star Metro Director is also available if you have any.
Are you seeking our approval to accept $9 million from the federal government?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I love it. I love it. For the formality, Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
Do not.
I have a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to accept, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Are there any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. City Manager, item number 11.03, please.
Thank you, sir. This item also involves Star Metro. Part of our routine business is providing transportation for disadvantaged and others in our community. Star Metro has served as the Community Transportation Coordinator for Leon County since 2002. The funds available to us will support that effort. The grant would be for $600,000. And again, this requires your approval to accept the grant. We recommend your approval. And Angela Baldwin is again with us to answer questions on this item.
Excellent. For the record, Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Move acceptance.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to commend Ms. Baldwin for the work that she has done at Star Metro, not only on these items on the agenda, but how she has handled our public transportation system during this coronavirus. I mean, I have not heard one complaint from anyone in the community about our public transportation system. And Mr. City Manager, I would just want to personally commend her and you for your leadership in that regard.
Commissioner Richardson, you are spot on. Our great men and women of Star Metro during these times, they are on the front line, and they have done a tremendous job keeping our services up. You know, we have all collectively said that our goals are laser focused. Number one is the health, safety, and welfare of this community. And number two is the continuity of municipal services. And this is a very important one. And Angela, y'all have done a tremendous job. Thank you very much. There is a second.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we all saw the report on WCTV the other night where in-house, our Star Metro staff built, designed, and built, and installed the shields for the bus drivers. That was phenomenal. And I was very proud of them for that as well.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. Could not agree with you more. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 11.04.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. This item also involves Star Metro. This is the final item, seeking your approval for a grant. This particular grant comes by way of the Florida Department of Transportation and provides operating assistance in an amount up to $1.3 million for next budget year, fiscal year 2021. It does require a 50% match, which can be met through our normal operating efforts, no additional program dollars. And the final allocation is determined by the Florida Department of Transportation District III soon. We don't know that amount, but we anticipate it to be approximately $1.3 million. We're seeking your approval of this grant as well.
Fantastic. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item to enter into the record?
No, sir.
Excellent. Do we have any questions for the City Manager or for Ms. Baldwin?
Move staff recommendation.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bryant, has been seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 11.05, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item involves our International Airport and a grant also provided by the CARES Act. We're very hopeful that there would be some relief from the airport. I think early on in the CARES Act discussion, there was thoughts about relief for airlines, but our airports are instrumental in providing part of that industry. David Pollard, our director, was instrumental in weighing in and advocating for airports. And I'm pleased to say that we have been designated an allocation up to about $21 million as part of that effort. This can go to support loss of revenues, capital investment, a variety of things. There's good flexibility in these funds. As you might imagine, the airport is funded. It's an enterprise fund. It's not funded from general revenues, not from tax revenues. It's funded from the fees that are created by passenger travel, parking and passenger travel and things of that nature. And so there's been a significant reduction in those dollars. This will be instrumental in making sure our airport stays financially viable and prepares us for the future. I mentioned David. He's joined us on the WebEx. He's available for any questions. And we seek your approval of accepting this grant as well.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment to formally enter into the record?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any questions, motions, comments?
Move acceptance.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on item number 11.06, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a presentation on this item. It goes without saying that the crisis that we're facing has resulted in great financial impact to all sectors of our economy, including local government. And we were in the throes of developing our budget, as you know. And the impacts still are unknown. But we wanted to make sure we provided you some insight of where we see things headed, talk about timing of our budget discussion this year. And we've also included a recommendation related to our electric utility, where we believe there's some opportunity for significant relief for our customers on top of the actions that you've already taken in the utility program. This is on top of your discussion or as a result of your discussion at your last city commission meeting, challenging us and directing us and staff to find ways to provide some utility relief. So Robert Wigan, our Director of Resource Management, has prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation. We're going to put it up on the screen and share it with everybody. And Robert's going to walk us through it. Robert?
Thank you, City Manager and Commissioners and appointed officials. If it's all right, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Do note that I may not be able to see you if you're asking questions once I change over the screen, so feel free to interrupt.
My first question, Robert, is, do you always have the Tallahassee Proud shirt on the wall like that? Or did you do it just for your presentation? Because that's looking strong today, my friend.
Hey, I stepped up and did it over the last two weeks just to remind myself what's important.
I love it. I love it. Keep going, my friend.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. I've got six slides. There's going to be an opportunity at the end of the presentation to have discussion, take a vote on some decisions we need to make. But I'd also be glad to entertain any questions that you have. Just jump right in as I'm speaking. There's four areas that I want to discuss today. You know, the city's focusing first on the pandemic response, ensuring reliable services. But we also know that there are some decisions to make with regard to the economy and relief that the public is certainly looking for. And so in one regard, I want to talk about a utility relief program to approve residential and commercial electric bill reductions totaling $6.3 million. I also then want to also talk about what we know today for fiscal year 20 revenue and expense impact. You know, there's a lot of information out there. We're trying to be reasonable and responsible in what we're looking at. And we want to bring that to you as soon as possible. We also know, looking forward, that one of our goals during the fiscal year 20 budget process was to prepare ourselves for fiscal year 21 and fire services fees. We know that with the potential impact of the pandemic continuing, that that's the most responsible aspect of moving forward with that would be to defer that decision. But there are some actions that we want to take for the fire services fees as we move forward through this budget process. And then lastly, we'd like to talk about next steps, look at a calendar and identify some targets for budget development. In order to, you know, as City Manager Reese Code mentioned at your direction from the last commission meeting, how much further can we go in assisting the public? Was a question you provided. At your direction, early on, the city suspended utility disconnects. And where we know that where there's financial hardship, utility services is working directly to defer utility payments. With that continued leadership and challenge, though, utility and financial staff have identified projected fuel savings. This projected fuel savings is usually, would have been credited over the next six months in the energy cost recovery charge. But in order to be responsive at this moment, we've identified $6.3 million that we're recommending be applied in two options. The recommended option is to implement a bill reduction for the month of May totaling $6.3 million, as I mentioned, allowing us to inject it quickly into the economy and directly to bill payers relative to what their fuel usage is. The discount for each customer would be based on usage. And so, for example, a typical household could receive a bill reduction of $30, nearly 27% of their bill. And a typical small business could realize a savings of $45. Small business might be those local shops, salons, small coffee shops. A typical medium-sized business could see a savings of $1,800. We'd be talking about a small restaurant, medium-sized restaurant, maybe a small office building. A typical large business could see savings up to $6,000. We're talking about a grocery store, which is very near and dear to us during this time. Alternatively, we also looked at whether, how we could go about implementing this over two months in May and June. That same $6.3 million reduction would realize a typical household savings of about $15 each month, with a typical small business saving $22.50, medium-sized business $900, and a typical large business $3,000. As I mentioned, there'll be an opportunity for discussion, but I'll pause in case there's any immediate questions.
Are there any questions? Robert, keep going.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next topic to discuss, you know, we know that we're in the middle of the pandemic response, some bright spots coming forward potentially. But we want to understand early on what some fiscal year 20 budget impacts are from the pandemic. One area that was instructive to us was the recession that we experienced beginning in 2008. As part of that experience, we saw that in 2008, 2009, and 2010, we saw almost a 4% reduction in our revenues across many of the departments. Now, most of the response to the recession was in the building, in family-owned residences in the development community, and then resulting in wage loss for those that worked in that area. You know, this experience will be a little bit different. We expect that immediately unemployment and wage loss and then also the sales tax impacts are going to be, are going to affect us. Besides using the recession as a past experience, we looked at some more current experiences. And we're fortunate to identify the Brookings Institution. They recently evaluated pandemic impacts on 150-plus municipal governments, and they identified sales, real estate, and income as the three primary effects. In their study, they posited that the elasticity of revenue was going to be very important, property taxes being more reliable as a area of revenue, but potentially not seeing an impact on those until future years because of the lag in time that it takes for new assessments to come through. Most of the immediate impacts they suggested were in sales and in wages, which we have seen across the community. And so with that as a guide, then we looked at some of our revenue sources to understand what impacts we'll see within our community. We also, at this time, had March actuals to look at. And it's a really early look because there were about, there was about one payroll and just a few weeks of experience of revenues. of revenues and expenditures that we could look to, but we know that we had a response during that month. Carrying that March experience over to April, May, and June, if we assume a 50% reduction in revenues in certain areas, and then in July, August, and September, if there was a 25% loss, we're looking at a general and utility fund impact during the plateau and recovery of the pandemic on the order of magnitude of $30.5 million in revenue loss. That is significant. It looks at sales tax, state revenue sharing, public service taxes, and those three most imminently affect our general fund. We have about $35 million of our general fund budgeted from those three sources of the $161 million. We have collected $16 million to date. And so if we estimate out the year, then we're looking at an estimate of another $14 million in revenue coming in, or it leads us to identify about a $4.8 million loss. Besides the general fund, when we look at our enterprise funds, we know that our large customers are most greatly impacted from a revenue perspective. So then in the electric utility, we know that 19% of our sales are from some of our largest customers. Gas is on the order of magnitude of 16% in sales from our largest customers, and then water and sewer closer to 10% of their sales to the commercial activities. And looking at their budgets with $428 million budgeted across those four funds, $201 million has been collected through March, about half of our fiscal year. And so we're projecting a $202 million revenue collection to September, which would result in about a $25.7 million loss. And that's how we come to the total of the $30.5 million. You know, we know that we need to look at other funds once we have some more experience. We know that aviation and Star Metro and our golf fund, for example, will see some impacts in April, May, and June, most likely. We also know that there's some federal relief, and so being able to balance those two factors is going to be important when we come back to speak to the totality of the impacts. I want to also speak to, besides revenue impacts, we want to ensure that essential services are being provided by the city, and so that's resulted in some unbudgeted expenditures. That total after about six weeks is $1.5 million or so. What we are doing is tracking these very closely with the intention to seek federal and state reimbursement. Additional PPEs for our public safety sectors, PPEs for those operations that are continuing to be on the front lines, additional cleaning and safety measures that we're taking in our facilities and in our transit systems. And then also, we recognize that we have shift workers that we're balancing out across the pandemic to ensure that we have reliable services. So again, after six weeks, we're looking at about $1.48 million of impacts that were unbudgeted. We'll balance these against any expenditures that are not necessary. Obviously, we're not traveling. There's other areas where we may see some savings, and we'll balance those out as we have more experience besides just knowing what the March figures are. To your credit, Commissioners, an additional $2.2 million has been dedicated to local recovery programs. Office of Economic Vitality, CEDR grants for local businesses and not-for-profits. Utility bill deferment is one area. With the decision today to add an additional $6.3 million for a utility relief program, that would bring that local economic response to about $9 million. As I mentioned earlier, one of our great responsibilities going into the next fiscal year was the fire services fees. The reality of the economy and the uncertainty of the economy suggests that our responsibility is to make a decision early about this. We're recommending that we delay the scheduled implementation of new fire services fees rather than implementing those in 2021. That, again, recognizes the uncertainty of the economy, commits to no changes in rates for fiscal year 2021, but does place upon us then a responsibility to ensure certainty in that fund. You know, the fire services fees and their course of action requires, you know, that they have a, you know, a fund that is balanced over the fiscal year. And so what we'd like to do is bring a resolution back that commits to foregoing that rate increase in fiscal year 2021, but the resolution would put that in place for 2022 or October of 2021.
Robert, if I could jump in real quick in regards to the fire services fees. I know that our good friends over at the county obviously play a role and have a voice in that as well. I am assuming that they are agreeing with our position to extend a year.
Yeah, we've been in direct consultation with them at each step of the process when we were developing the early results from the fire services fee, and then we've been in close contact with them also to discuss the pushing off of the fire services fees in 2021. And any resolution that we bring back for your adoption would be with their agreement.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Robert, I certainly agree with staff's recommendation on that. I think is it a wise and appropriate recommendation? The question that I asked of the City Manager the other day is what impact that will have on the construction of the new fire station on Lake Bradford Road. Could you talk to us about that?
Absolutely. You know, the deferment of this resolution in the fire services fees in 2021 is not going to be easy. We are going to have to look at one-time costs that should be considered. One area that we had planned was the fire station. It is very reasonable that we can begin the building of that fire station in 2021, and we'll explore the options for deferring some of the borrowing so that we're not paying for it in 2021, but then would be ready to pay for those bonds in 2022. We'll do that in consultation with the Treasurer Clerk's Office and with the fire services staff and management.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted everybody to understand the impact of deferring that fee increase on the construction of that facility on Lake Bradford Road. But I am fully in support of the manager's recommendation here today.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On point with what Commissioner Richardson just said, I wanted to be very clear for those who are listening and watching. At no point have we said that that facility would not be built. So we want to make sure that we were clear that that is not what is being said here. What is being said here is that for the fire services fee, the impact will be to possibly delay borrowing money to do that with. So that facility is still on the books to take place. I just want to be clear on that.
Both of you have made wonderful points.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. We can certainly shape the balance of balancing of that budget to ensure that we start the construction and then enter into 2022 with a balanced budget. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? If I could, thank you. If I could also say to Robert, great job in you and your staff in putting this together and making it very clear. I think that the City of Tallahassee has done an outstanding job in making sure that, one, employees are still working and are still being paid. There have been no furloughs. The City Manager and his team, you all done outstanding job to make sure that people are still working. I'm hearing from residents that masks are being delivered to them personally, and they really appreciate that, but just know that that costs money, too. I also want to point out some of the other things that we're doing with our partners across the street, as Robert has already pointed out, where we provided funding to try to help small businesses and now the nonprofits. So think about, we want to look at all these kinds of things, very creative things in utility, consideration to help people with their utilities. Just think about all these kinds of things that the City of Tallahassee, because of some opportunities that we've had, are able to offer these things that others may not be able to do. And it is a true blessing to be able to do these kinds of things for the City of Tallahassee and for Leon County that others may not have an opportunity to do. And so I just want to point that out, that our staff, under the direction of the City Manager, you all are doing an outstanding job. You're considering human beings out there, not just machines, and we really appreciate that. And I know that people that I've talked to really appreciate the job that you're doing, and thank you for counting every penny and making sure that we don't go bankrupt because we've got to be able to take care of those who can't take care of themselves, and we've got to be able to take care of those of us who can take care of ourselves but need a little help right now. So we really appreciate that. I've given, the City Manager and our conversation, I redefine how you calculate present and future value of money, and that's what we're dealing with here. If presently you don't have it, the future ain't going to matter. So we've got to make sure that what we have right now, we're able to try to sustain our community so that we will have a future. So we thank you all for what you're doing to make sure that that happens.
Well said. Robert, back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You've given us clear direction that our focus is on the right response, which is a strong commitment to city services, clear commitment to economic recovery, but also then understanding how our revenue is going to be affected, and we'll continue to work on that. As we move forward, we know there are some critical stages in this process. You know, our focus being on the COVID response, we put that into the context of where we are with our budget process. There are some key dates that are out there that also direct us to adjust our schedule. Those include that at some point, we'll get estimates from the state on revenue impacts for our sales tax and our state revenue sharing. And so we'll have a better factor or measure to look at to say what our impacts are for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year. Those numbers come to us end of June, early July, about the same time. July 1st is when the property appraiser commits to provide us with property tax estimates. As you all know, then in July, we also affirmed the millage rate, which will assume to be 4.1 mills. So with those two dates in mind, the recommendation is that we would move forward with a July 8th agenda item to bring back all of these factors, our impacts on our general fund, our impacts on our enterprise funds, the CARES Act relief. Another aspect that we haven't spoken to is the reserves that we have as a community. You know, we've been fortunate that when we have had hurricanes in the past, that those reserves have been put to use. I would point out that we're working with FEMA and the Department of Emergency Management to accelerate some of that payback of those reserves that we've used to respond to Hermine and Irma and Michael, and they've been very responsive in working with us. In fact, issued guidelines on mitigating some of the information that we have to submit so that we can accelerate the return of about $8 million to the general fund and about $20 million to the enterprise funds to bring those reserves back to where we will need them as we move forward in the future. So again, keeping in mind the state of Florida estimates in June, the property appraiser estimates in July, we're recommending an update to you July 8th. Because that timeline is then short to turn around to September public hearings, we are asking to add an August 19 workshop to put us in good stead then for September public hearings on the 9th and 23rd of September. So again, this schedule provides responsible estimates and recommendations. It keeps our eyes on the pandemic in the meantime, acknowledges the impacts to the economy, and then allows us to make reasoned decisions in a time of great uncertainty. With that consideration, our next steps would include approving the residential and commercial electric bill reductions of $6.3 million, approving the revised budget development and adoption schedule for fiscal year 21, as indicated in the chart to the right, accepting the update from staff regarding the anticipated fiscal impact of the COVID public health crisis, and then lastly, directing staff to develop a fire services fee resolution in consultation with Leon County to set rates for fiscal year 21 and 22 and beyond. This would be based on rates in terms similar to where we are currently with our interlocal agreement and establish a reliable revenue source for a period of five to 10 years. Be glad to answer any of your questions, and thank you for your comments.
Before we move into questions, first of all, Robert, thank you for that incredible presentation. We appreciate it. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comments to enter into the record on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. And I'd also like to take this point in the meeting to remind Commissioners and let the public know that we have received comments in the days leading up to this meeting. All comments that we had received by 11 o'clock this morning on this item or any others were compiled and distributed to the city commissioners around noon, also posted for the public to see with our agenda so that the commissioners and the public have the same information, including the two comments that we received on this item. And we have not received any additional comments since those were distributed and posted. So what you see is everything we have received. And with that, Mr. Mayor, on this item, there were two comments, both supporting or requesting additional utility bill relief.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, let me start off, and we'll open it up for conversation. I fully support the staff recommendation that is before us. Robert, you and your team have done a tremendous job during these uncertain times of putting the city in the right fiscal position and making us well aware of where we are, but also where we are heading. Very pleased with this commission as well. Working with our partners, as the Mayor Pro Tim mentioned, we have provided a community response for small businesses, leveraging our assets to be able to bring in both state and federal resources. We have created a response for nonprofits, using our assets and resources to be able to bring in additional state and federal resources. But our team has also gotten creative within the City of Tallahassee on our individual response, specifically what we have done previously in regards to utility bills, our commitment to not shutting off anyone's utility within the City of Tallahassee and our customers that are in the unincorporated as well, and taking this extra step, Robert, and creatively finding a way to be able to inject $6.3 million immediately into our local economy through a rebate for every utility customer. I congratulate you. This is the right thing to do in my mind. I am in support of the staff recommendation in regards to the technical aspects of injecting 6.3 into the month of May's bill instead of spreading it out over two bills. Of course, I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues as well. But thank you so much for all your hard work and dedication. We know this is going to be a difficult year. We also know that our schedules are going to be altered as we move forward to make sure that we comply with all of our legal deadlines to make sure that we pass a balanced budget by the end of the year. Y'all are working hard, and we really do appreciate it. With that, we'll open it up for comments from my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This is lame, but let me add on that we are certainly most appreciative, really, of the job that has been done by staff, not only to position us for today, but looking forward to the end of this fiscal year and also as we prepare for the upcoming fiscal year. I also want to point out, in addition to what has already been said, that not only have we done many good things, but we have been the leader. We have other jurisdictions all over the state of Florida. We have other jurisdictions all over the state of Florida that are calling, watching, asking for input. So we, we are trailblazers. And I think that we should acknowledge our staff as being such. Because other communities are, have now started to look to us and say, what are you doing? So commendations again to, to our city manager and to the entire leadership team for what they're doing to keep us ahead of and having others to actually try and solicit input on, on ways that they too can protect and, and support their community. And I certainly support this recommendation, this item that has come forth. I, I am personally thinking that we might want to look at the month of May, but if it's more advantageous to do two, I'm certainly amenable to that also. Thank you, sir.
Would you like to make a motion, Dr. Bryant, to begin the, the conversation in regards to the staff recommendation?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to move staff recommendation for, let me, option, I think, option one.
Yes, ma'am. For option one, and it has been seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, of course, want to commend staff for the yeoman's job that they have done, you know, where lots of people would be panicking. Our city manager and budget staff have deliberately looked at not only where we are in light of all of the, the assistance that we've given our local businesses and nonprofits, but the city manager and I had a very long discussion about the fact that, yes, we, we've got to look at where we are now and get through this short-term period, but we've also still got to keep our eyes on the long term. And from what we've heard today, they have done that. And, and I certainly want to commend staff for that. I, I would agree with, with getting the money or keeping the money into the hands of our utility customers as quickly as possible during the month of May so that they can use that money how they see deem appropriate and it can go back into the economy. But I'm, I'm very excited about what we've done, where we are, and how we've kept, kept our eyes on the future as well. So my commendations go out to the city manager, the budget staff, and all of the, the employees of the city. And the one last thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, is the other thing that the manager and I talked about is maintaining our staff to do everything that we can to not have to resort to furloughs or firings as we move forward in developing our budget for the years to come. That's, that's, I think ought to be real important to all of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Could not agree with you more. Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
You know, I've pretty much said what I thought, that our, our staff under the leadership of the city manager and the deputy city manager and the assistant city managers, you all are doing a fantastic job. And what's key to me is that residents are benefactors of what is occurring here, as well as our employees. You know, the city of Tallahassee has about 3,000 city employees and we, that's a great impact in our community. And we want to make sure that our employees are taken care of, not only that they're being paid, but they're also allowed to work from home. As many of you who follow me on Facebook, you know that I'm, I'm very critical of another elected who has not done that for a lot of people, the state employees, let's just be clear. So I, I appreciate the leadership that the city is showing in understanding that we must practice social distancing and we must have people working from home, but we must still have those essential services. So we appreciate that. We, we thank, we thank you for doing that. And like Commissioner Richardson, not only for now, but being able to look at the long haul, because we don't know how long this thing is going, we want to make sure that our people are, are taken care of because they are loyal to us and are loyal to the residents and we want to be loyal to them because we couldn't do what we're doing without them. So we really appreciate that. And for the residents, we appreciate you and your patience as we try to figure it all out. Are we doing, are we perfect? No, but we are darn sure trying to do our level best to make sure you get all of your essential services and that it doesn't cost you anymore. So thank you for what you're doing, city manager and, and assistant city managers and, and staff from the, the frontline to the, the outline. We thank you for all that you're doing.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow for comments?
Yeah, thank you. And you know, I think everybody already kind of nailed it, you know, from, from businesses to nonprofits and now to utilities. I think this is just great work. On behalf of everybody, just trying to address what we can. We know it's a challenging time for everybody. It's a challenging time for the city and I think everyone's banding together to find solutions that, that can work and, and will work and looking forward to taking this vote.
So before I wrap up and I call for a vote, I do want to take the opportunity to also say, probably much like each one of you, talking to my colleagues, you've probably been approached saying, hey, I've heard about the utility rebate program. This is fantastic. Thank you so much, but how can I help make a difference in this community? And I want to take this chance to highlight another incredible program that we have in our electric utility that plays right into this rebate and encourage people to think about it. And Mr. Manager, not to put you on the spot, but I think this is a great opportunity for you to explain Project Share. Project Share colleagues is a, is a program that we have, and I'll let the city manager go into a little bit more detail where you can actually write a little bit more on your utility bill and actually it goes into a fund to help other people, our neighbors in this community, pay their utility bill. So if you have somebody that approaches, you can say, hey, the rebate is a nice gesture, but I would like to use my rebate to actually help someone else. What can I do? I think that our message should be strong and on point. Hey, donate it to Project Share. You'll be helping a fellow neighbor here in Tallahassee be able to meet the needs above and beyond the rebate of their utility bill. And I was wondering, Mr. Manager, if you can just touch on it, maybe also talking about a message that we could put in the utility bill. You know, we send out the little, the, the letter that goes with it. How can we communicate and make sure that the public is aware that if they do want to help out other people in the community with their rebate, that there's an opportunity to do so?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before the city manager gets to that, I, I own point.
Yes, sir.
When, when the city manager and I talked about this, one of, one of the rebate, one of the things that I told him, I, I said, Mr. City Manager, my family doesn't necessarily need the rebate. What can we do? And he explained to me that, that we didn't have many other options. And it's interesting because in the time since that conversation, I've had other residents. I, I've got an email right now that I could share with you if I needed to, where a, a utility customer said, I would like to opt out of the rebate and use money for some other reason. So I think this conversation would be an excellent conversation to have and how we might be able to, if, if someone wants to opt out, and I, like I said, I know the city manager told me, we don't necessarily have that option now, but this conversation here might be a way that we can encourage people to help others.
I agree.
So thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. City Manager, you want to touch on it?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And commissioners and Commissioner Richardson, you were definitely on point when we had the conversation. And, and Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll rewind just a little bit because we have been exploring options to, to the best of our ability to find ways to provide relief to our community. And we always knew targeted relief would be the very best, but in the case of utility rates, you have to do it across the board. And that's what this item involves and it provides everybody a discount. You, you know, and, and I tell you, Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barber is of course with us today and she recalls this program much better than me, but we do have a program that's been in place for a couple decades where customers can donate, not normally associated with the rate reduction necessarily, but they can choose to donate money. We collect it through the utility mechanism and we provide it to a local nonprofit group, the Capital Area, Capital Area Action Agency that can then help individuals with their utility bill. It certainly would be a method that could be used. They would get the discount on their electric bill. In other words, the bill would be lower, about 27% lower. And if they wanted to donate any sum of money, the, the money that they achieve in the discount or otherwise, I think it would be a great time to encourage that. James Barnes is our customer, chief customer operations officer, and he's participating in this WebEx as well. He and I spoke about that. I know he and his team stand ready to assist in any way. We're thinking about ways just based on, on this conversation to communicate it. Clearly, the discount would be achieved in May. So the utility bills of our customers will be lower in May than they would otherwise be with your action today. And, and so we could handle it in any way. And I think if nothing else, it's a great time to talk about those that can help. Maybe they won't help every month, not limited to this discount, but I think it certainly is an avenue. Commissioner Richardson, when you and I talked, I was, I was thinking of how we give a rate reduction to some and not others, and this might be a great way to achieve it, just in a different form. So, and I know all of y'all have expressed that interest. How, how do we best get the reduction to those that need it the most? And this, this might be a great avenue.
Sure. Well, I would ask also, Mr. Manager, if you wouldn't mind working with our public information officer to craft a message that each one of us can, that, that, send it to each one of the five of us, because we're all very active on social media in our own circles. And as long as we're on the same message, you know, we can shoot our own videos and send it out with the same message. And then I think it's, I think it's important for us to also consider, you know, other methods of being able to get the message out. And I would leave that up to you and, and your team of what's the most appropriate way to do so. But, you know, we've got WCO T, we've got all of our online presence, we have all of our social media platforms, and you have the five of us that are willing to take the same message out, you know, in, in our way as well. So, yeah, I think that this is a very positive thing that we can, we can push to help our fellow neighbors.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that we can, as commissioners and the mayor, we can go further and say that we will be the first to give up our discount to help others pay their utility bills. So I'm, I'm encouraging us all, all of us to lead the way.
I agree. Daily family is in. We will definitely be participating as well.
Although I didn't check with the Coxes, the Coxes are in.
Yeah. I love it. Dr. Bryant?
Yes, I, I want to add on to that. And I certainly accept that challenge, Commissioner Williams Cox. The Bryant family is in also. I do want to know and follow up, can we actually target actual families or does it need to go through a clearinghouse? This is the manager.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, I'm not sure I understand the question as it relates to targeting.
Let's say I wanted to give my money to you, not hardly, but let's say I wanted to reduce yours rather than send it to an organization to reduce in general, where someone had to apply or say they needed it. Will our program offer that opportunity?
No, ma'am. It doesn't. We'll, we'll take advantage of an existing program and the way the funds are distributed are through a third party nonprofit. You know, it's arms-length and we collect the money, we provide it to a, a, a very credible group locally. And in fact, they have access to other dollars. And so they decide the need based on application and a process. And so we don't have the flexibility to self-direct or, or allow individuals to identify who it might go to. And it is a very credible process that we've used for many years and that's how we would apply this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any further comment? None. All those in favor of staff recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 11.07, the public safety update. Mr. City Manager and Chief Ravel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief added this item to your agenda. Seen the news now, last week, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement has issued its year report, or actually, I think it's a complete report for the prior year. Good results and, and of course, we track our own, but we don't know how we're going to stack up for the rest of the state. So I thought the timing was appropriate to add it to this meeting so that Chief Ravel could share with you and the public kind of some trends that we're seeing and where we stand today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Ravel.
Chief Ravel, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you too, Mayor. Good afternoon, commissioners and appointed officials. Thank you for the opportunity. First off, just let me say that, you know, I want to point out that our UCR guidelines remind us that we should not compare cities to other cities or even counties because crime is, is truly about people and it's about their feelings of safety and their, their fear of crime. So it's not about numbers. But that being said, we are proud to, to announce that Leon County has moved out of the top spot and moved down to third with Bay County and Duval County higher in areas with populations of more than 100,000 people. It's also interesting to point out that there are 32 different departments within the state that have a higher rate per 100,000 people than we do. The main understanding should be that the numbers are total numbers and they include things like vehicle thefts and vehicle burglaries. And, you know, we can push those large numbers down and still show, you know, a dramatic increase in the percentages. This is the primary reason that, you know, we continually push our, our 9pm routine and to remind everybody to lock their doors and remove their valuables from their cars, especially their guns. You know, violent crimes, you know, if you take one homicide versus 10 homicides, they really don't affect the percentage as much as far as UCR, but they certainly affect, you know, how people feel and, and how, and what their feelings are about safety and crime in their community. You know, the violent crime is, numbers are looked at completely differently because the media can promote that and, and, you know, and does promote that. So that's a direct impact on how people feel about crime. Just a side note, and, you know, everybody, knock on wood, wherever you are, we're currently on pace to cut our homicide numbers nearly in half this year. So I just, a tremendous credit to our staff and the members in our criminal investigation bureau and our patrol officers and everyone that plays a part in, in investigating those crimes. I think our community outreach that we've been doing has had a tremendous effect this year. We have had people coming forward to help us with issues and, and to be out in the community and talking about the reduction of violent crimes and, and putting the guns away. And that truly, truly has had an impact. So definitely a lot of credit goes there. Also want to give credit where credit is due. You know, the numbers that, that we're looking at are numbers from last year. So many of the things that Chief DeLeo did when he was here, including the outside audit of our crime stats and the location-based reporting on vehicle burglaries and other things have streamlined the way that stats should be compiled. And after two years now, we truly can compare, you know, apples to apples with other agencies and, and other jurisdictions and other counties. So we are implementing many of the things that we've continued to talk about in our, in our public meetings. And, you know, I look forward to these numbers continuing to go down in, in years to come. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Chief, how's the morale of the, of the troops out there with, you know, under the state of emergency and everything?
It, the morale's very good at department still. You know, we are working very hard at communication and keeping our people informed of what's going on. Our officers are doing a, an amazing job out on the streets and, and dealing with people and, and talking with people and, and just educating, you know, our community as, as the laws and the decrees and the orders come out, you know, and things change. You know, our officers are just doing a tremendous job with that. And the in-house people that are teleworking and, and, you know, working in shifts at the department continue to make sure that things are flowing smoothly. So we're plugging right along and morale's good.
Excellent. I like the new uniform, Chief. It looks good.
It's, it's a lot more comfortable, I'll tell you that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, I know one of the things that we've done over the years is to increase staffing at the department, and that has contributed, I think, to the lowering of these crime numbers as well.
as well. Can you talk to us about what your current staffing status is and what you see as the need going forward?
Yes, sir. Staffing is critically important to everything that we do. And unfortunately, our, you know, the recruiting and some of the retention issues that we've had have continued to creep up. We are having to make issues and adjustments within the department to make sure that the basic services that we provide are being met. But I've said repeatedly, you know, since, since I took office, that, you know, we should be a 700-person department. That, that number is not just something that's randomly pulled out of the air, but given the, the number of calls for service that our department answers and the community that we serve, that, that's the number that we should be looking at. So we are looking strongly at how we do that. We're putting together a group right now that will be a recruiting team. And, you know, the emphasis on that is going to be their recruiters in the sense of, you know, it's much more like military recruiters where, you know, we're going to pester people about jobs and we're going to call them and we're going to move folders through much quicker as we get qualified applicants. So we've streamlined that process, and you should start seeing results of that fairly quickly. But we are in a critical, a critical point, and we've got to get more officers. So, you know, it's, it's a difficult time with the budget presentation, and we all understand where we are, you know, with this. But, you know, as contract is coming up, that's going to be a big issue for us. And that's going to be a big issue for how we are able to recruit and move forward. So how we manage, you know, that contract in contrast to the deficits that we have and the issues that we face is, is going to be critical. So we definitely have to work together on that and address those, those issues. But we are currently about 46 positions down. Don't quote me on that number, but that's, that's pretty close. And we have 12, I think, people that are scheduled to retire before the end of this year. We have 11 that are currently scheduled to be out in a couple of weeks. So we're still going, even with them coming out, you know, we're going to be a negative one. And that's kind of the trend that we've seen over the last couple of years. So we've got to do different things to make sure that we're getting people, you know, to apply, number one, and then getting them through that process as quickly as possible, including pre-certified officers that we can, you know, get on the street much faster.
Thank you, Chief.
Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions, comments for the chief?
I see the city manager had his finger raised.
Was he pointing at it? Was he holding it up or pointing it at me?
Give me a big thumbs up. Now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mind, I'd like to tag on to the comments that Chief Revel made. I think it's an appropriate time, excellent question, Commissioner Richardson, to have this conversation, because we are staring down the barrel of a very difficult fiscal year 21 budget. And as each of you know, we're negotiating the contracts with our fire and police, just in that cycle. That's a normal thing we do. And Chief Revel and I talked the other night, you know, the priorities of the, of the city are we want to make sure we have a police force that, that represents and reflects our community in every way possible, in diversity and background and approach. That's a, that's a big priority item for us. But as the chief has mentioned, and he's done an excellent job, by the way, managing his workforce, taking the resources that are available, you know, leading the staff and making sure everybody's on the same page and doing what we can to reduce crime. He needs some relief, and we have to, we have to enhance our tools to recruit new officers. It's a very, very competitive world. And frankly, being a police officer, you know, fewer people today may want to do that. It's very challenging. So I, I'm really glad this conversation came up, because that's a priority that we're discussing, that will get a considerable amount of attention, of attention in the contract, to find ways to make sure that we are the most competitive agency anywhere around. That's not only a compensation, that's in our general approach, professionalism of the department, the respect for the department. And I think we're turning the corner, and I kudos to Chief Revel and his entire team, because I think our officers are proud to work for T P D. I'm proud that they do work for T P D. But it is a very, very high priority issue to make sure that we have every resource possible. So I just wanted to chime in on that, because it does deserve a lot of attention.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other comments, colleagues? This item does not require a vote. It was just simply an update from public safety. So I appreciate it, Chief. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have a question of Chief Revel. Oh, Chief, where, I know that you were putting together a citizens advisory group, and you were also putting together a youth advisory group, I believe. I know that priority may have had to focus, but can you just kind of give us an update on where we are with that?
Yes, ma'am. We have all the applications in for the Assistant Advisory Committee. They have all been contacted. The first meeting was scheduled right before the stay-at-home order came out. So we are staying in contact with them to make sure that they know that as soon as we can get together, we will. It's about 83 people, so it's a very large group. And if this continues much longer, then we will consider, you know, doing an online meeting with them as well. But it's very important for that first meeting to be able to explain to them exactly what's going to be expected, you know, kind of what the requirements of that participation is going to be, how often that's going to be, and make sure that we have, you know, they have full understanding of the commitment that's going to be required there. So that first meeting is one we'd much rather do in person, just so we can get that, the immediate feedback and see that. But if, if this continues on, then we will consider an electronic meeting. Our Juvenile Advisory Committee, the application, the application process is done, and Deputy Chief Bryant and her team are sifting through those. And again, we'll schedule a meeting as soon as that's over. So they were both moving very rapidly. We're about to come right before this hit, and we just kind of hit the pause button right now because of the stay-at-home order.
Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely.
Thanks again, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any other business come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir. We do not.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and go to City Commission Information and the sharing of ideas? We have a little bit of time before the five o'clock public hearing. Mayor Protim, I'll, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say to all of our listening audience and those who may be watching us, thank you for your wonderful response to the city's offer of providing cloth reusable masks. The, the response has been overwhelming. I had no idea that there was such a great need, but I am glad that the city of Tallahassee, again, under the leadership of City Manager Reese Gold, to make that happen. I'll tell you that. He said to me, I, I had a conference call last week, and he said to me, go ahead and let people know that we'll have masks, some masks available. And so I did that, and then I took it a step further and put it on Facebook. Little did I know that not only would, would you put on Facebook, it goes to your friends, but it goes to your friends and your friends and your friends and your friends, like seven removed. I had no idea. So I'm getting responses from people who are apartment managers who have sent this to their residents that they can get masks. So what we've done is those early requests have been received, and City Manager Gold wanted them delivered. So they are being delivered by staff to, to residents. We are having to kind of slow it down a little bit so that production can keep up with our requests. So many of you may have received an email from me saying that we have depleted our current supply and that we will make an announcement and give, give instructions on how you can get them in the, in the future. So kudos to, to the city manager and whoever that army is that he has out there delivering masks. They are very well received, and we're, we're happy that our community is taking advantage of, of this opportunity. I don't have my mask handy right now, but they are very, very good mask quality, and I think that we are, it's something that we can be really, really be proud of. So thank you to the community for embracing it, and I'm really, really proud of the fact that we were able to do this. We had requests from other counties, I must admit, but we, of course, we have to take care of Leon County, so I hope they understand. I also want to give a big shout out to FAMU and Bond Clinic, who are opening up the walk-in clinic for testing for COVID on Saturday. Because I'm a rattler and a proud rattler, I'm really proud of how the, how we stepped up to answer to the community's need. I'm really proud of that fact. And so I'm hoping that folks will take advantage of that. And it's a location on the South Side that, that helps our South Side residents who may not be able to get to the North Side. So kudos to them. And keep doing, keep doing what we're doing, guys. I think it's being realized, we're doing a great job. And as it says in the Book of Nehemiah, you're doing a great job. You cannot, you should not, and we will not come down. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryant?
I had to get off of you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to go first, some of the things that Commissioner Williams-Cox said, and add to that, not, not only have we got masks out, and there still is a great need, but I, I really want to thank the thousands of volunteers across this community that have shown up to either put food boxes in folks' cars and have passed out masks and have done neighborly things, just to be a blessing to citizens of Tallahassee, Florida. We, we live in a special place, and I think it's times like this when we've really come to recognize that Tallahassee, Florida is a special place to live and that we support one another in our endeavors. And I too am, am a proud rattler, and I just want to add one thing on to Commissioner Williams-Cox's comments, and that you, you don't really need a doctor's note in order to take advantage of this testing. So I join her in encouraging people to act, especially on the South Side, to come, walk up to whatever you need to do to take advantage of these 14 days at FAMU Stadium where this testing is, is available. I also, again, want to thank our staff for doing, I, I don't think we can thank them enough, to be honest. So I know I'm being repetitive, but it's, it's well worth it, because they, they really are making things happen across the city. And then our nonprofits who are stepping up to the plate, our for-profits, our citizens who are attempting to follow the guidelines that have been set, such that our numbers for either those who have tested positive or those who will avoid testing positive because we stayed at home or whatever it was we had to do. Thank you, citizens of Tallahassee. And then I, I was thinking while I was sitting, I think that if there is a way that we could add to the negotiation process, and I'm sure the city attorney will tell me one way or the other, but i- if there's a way for us to acknowledge and recognize our first responders in the negotiation process by maybe adding some hours, additional hours, that will be available to them. I know we're in negotiations and, and you can't just do it. It has to go through a process. But I want them to know, and I think we all want them to know how much we appreciate what they do as first responders in our city. And I think this is being done probably all over the state, probably all over the nation. Every time I, I look on, on TV and we, we see people standing outside the windows, banging on pots and doing different things to celebrate what people are doing, it, it reminds us that we too can celebrate what our people are doing. So with that, I will, let me, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, may I ask the city attorney, I'm sure she's on, how, how that could possibly be done as a part of negotiations for our first responders? Or is there, are there limitations to this process?
Thank you, Commissioner Bryant. Of course, you know, if the city manager is your representative and wants to put forth a proposal in negotiations, he is free to do that. All parties are, have the opportunity to present any proposals that they desire.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'll leave that with the city manager. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could add on to that, and I know the city attorney will agree, that would be considered a compensation item, and it would be a modification to a contract. So I think the timing of the negotiations are appropriate, especially if we're talking about maybe a bonus at the leave at the end of the year. I think it does fit into this process. And, and certainly, we can, we can add that to the conversation. I'm sure it'd be much welcome, but I do believe that's probably the right mechanism. I'll look to the city attorney to, in this, this fluid conversation, but I believe that is the right way to do it.
And that's correct, City Manager, that the process is open currently and proposals are being sent by both sides at this current time. So yes, and it would be a compensation item, and it would be covered under that particular article of the collective bargaining agreement.
Very good. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if I need to, I just suggest to our city manager, he seems to be in support of the idea, to at least as our representative, unless there's some disagreement from my fellow commissioners.
All right. I think the city manager hears you loud and clear heading into negotiations.
Thank you, sir. That's all that I had.
Great. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I do agree with Commissioner Bryant on recognizing our first responders for the tremendous job that they do, our police and firefighters and E M T. They do a tremendous job. We probably don't compensate them like I wish we could, and so I think that this would be something we should consider in that regard. The other, the one thing that I wanted to mention about our partnership with FAMU and the Testing Center, we have committed 1,000 masks for them to use, and the city manager has agreed to get those delivered to them. They're, they're scheduled to start on Saturday, but I hear the weather might not cooperate on Saturday. But whenever they launch that effort, we have pledged 1,000 masks, and they have welcomed that contribution from the city. So that was great. And then just lastly, Mr. Mayor, I think we will be prudent to staying shut down at this point. I know that there are some other cities that have opened beaches and are planning to open certain businesses, but I think it's prudent for us to, to stay where we are until this thing really clears, and we know that it's appropriate for our citizens to, to go back out. And so I, I would just suggest that we not consider anything other than that at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, I would echo that, Commissioner Richardson. Let's stay home until we know exactly where we're at and where we're headed. I just, one thing I wanted to bring up, I, I think we're kind of getting into the swing of the online meetings, and, you know, Harold's done a great job of keeping us along, and Jim has been very diligent to make sure we get public comment in advance and be able to read it. And we are reading public comment, but I did want to throw out, if we don't know how long this is going to go and how many more online meetings we've done, to kind of look to the future of how we can incorporate the public more, I don't know what, on the technology side, that would involve and how we keep it secure and all that. But just looking at, if there are people who wanted to call in or video and to express their comment, how, how we would do that.
Good point.
Mr. Mayor? This is Jim. Let me make a quick response to that. Obviously, we'll certainly take, take that under advisement and, and look into it. We have just begun some preliminary looks just to see what's available and what works and what's been done in other jurisdictions. We've seen some be very successful and some be unsuccessful. So we will continue to take a look at that and keep you posted. And I appreciate Commissioner Matlow's perspective as well, that we don't know how long this will be going on, so we need to be sure we're prepared for whatever that eventuality is.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, you have one more thing?
Yes, one more thing.
Sorry, I apologize. Commissioner Matlow?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry, Jeremy.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I wanted to say kudos to our Communications Director, Allison Ferris, and people from across our community. You'll notice that we have two PSAs. and people from across our community. You'll notice that we have two PSAs hot off the press, one yesterday and one today. And you'll see people from our community, a cross-section of our community that you will recognize. Go to the City Tallahassee page, or go to my page, my city page, and you'll see those PSAs there encouraging people to stay home. We have people, like I say, from across our community. You'll see them, you'll recognize them, and listen to what they're saying. Let's stay home. If Dr. Fauci doesn't say it's time to go, then it's not time to go. Okay? But thank you to Allison and the team, and everyone who participated in making this community targeted PSA to encourage people to stay home.
Excellent. Couple of comments real quick. First of all, as always, it's a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you. And I'm real proud of the city of Tallahassee, every single person that works for our city family, and everything that we've been able to do for this community. And I'm really pleased with this commission. We've done a lot of thinking outside the box, as I mentioned earlier, together with our partners across the street at the county. We've been able to come up with a response for small businesses, nonprofits. We here at the city have come up with individual responses that will also positively impact nonprofits and small businesses as well. And I like to think that we've been ahead of the curve. We've been on the same page as a community, both with the county, the school board, with the medical community, with higher education community. Folks, if you think about it, we started our community discussions back in February. And when Robert had the timeline that was up on our screen, and I started thinking about, you know, when we actually began preparing and moving forward, I'm real proud of this community, real proud of the city government, and what we've been able to accomplish. Creatively thought outside the box, and how we could put additional resources into the emergency operations center for those that are experiencing homelessness. We've thought outside the box on how we can utilize small businesses here in Tallahassee, divvy up socks, to help us meet the demand for masks here in our community, and help keep our people safe. This is a great community to live, work, play, and to serve in. And it's a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you. So I stay in touch with the medical community, just like y'all do. I talk to CEOs of both hospitals every day. And while there's this conversation going on on a national level and on a state level about when and how we're going to reopen, I am reminded by our medical community every day that we are still seeing an increase in numbers. Our numbers are going up. All of our local projections show that they will still go up in the month of April and May as well. You are absolutely correct, colleagues. Say we've got to stay vigilant, we have to stay on message. The best thing that we can do for ourselves, our families, our friends, and this community is to stay home and limit our outside activities to only the essential dress. And when we do go outside for the essential dress, when we do go out, somebody's got a bonnet. But nonetheless, I think that we need to stay on message, continue moving forward. Now, I will also tell you that tomorrow at 10:30 in the morning, I will be hosting virtually the mayor chair chair meeting. This is the meeting with the chairman of the county commission, county administrator, the school superintendent, the chairwoman of the school board, Reese, and myself. We have asked both Alan Kinsey from CMRC Hospital and Mark O'Brien from TMH to join us. Basically, it is going to be an update on where our governments are, and the measures that we have taken as governments to help this community out during COVID-19. Of course, we'll be broadcasting live. It's on the website as well. Please tune in and join us. And look forward to having everybody be there tomorrow at 10:30. This is an opportunity for all of the local governments, obviously, to talk about the global pandemic, how it's impacting our respective governments, and how we're moving forward together. And finally, it is 4:34. We have a public hearing at 5 o'clock. Harold, I'm going to ask you, if I get anything wrong, please jump in. But I think the recommendation is to stay logged in, mute your phones, and we will mute all phones as well. You can go ahead and turn your camera off, and in 25 minutes, we will come back at 5 o'clock for the public hearing. There will be a separate screen that will be put up on the television station, our channel right now, for the next 25 minutes. So with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting into recess. We will come back at 5 o'clock for the public hearing. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One thing before you go, just, it was on point with your meeting for tomorrow.
Sure.
In light of what we're hearing about the assisted living facilities throughout the country, and how they're being impacted, maybe not tomorrow's meeting, but maybe some future meetings, we have a representative from that industry.
Absolutely.
Talk to us about what they're doing to prevent what's happening in other places from happening here in Tallahassee and Leon County.
Great idea, Commissioner. Great idea. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, also on point, I did not hear that anyone from the Department of Health was going to be a part of that meeting. Will they have information from the Department of Health, or will they be participating in future meetings?
Well, the Department of Health, as part of the county, I would expect that to be part of the county's presentation, but we will be more than happy to reach out and ask Claudia to participate as well. I just assumed, maybe wrongly so, that a Department of Health update would be part of the county update, but I will make sure that that invitation is offered, of course.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll see everybody at 5 o'clock in about 24 minutes. Meeting back into order for the public hearing. We have seven items that are before us today. We are on item 13.01. First of all, I'm sorry, do we have everybody here?
I'm here.
Commissioner Matlow's here.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tim's here. Commissioner Williams Cox, good. Commissioner Bryant, good. Do we have Commissioner Richardson? Commissioner Richardson's here as well. Mr. City Manager, we're on item number 13.01, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the city attorney, and we are, item number 13.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-06, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting small-scale amendments to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, provided for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No comments, Mayor.
Excellent. Colleagues, questions, comments, motions?
Move acceptance.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney, 13.02.
Thank you. Item number 13.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-11, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting small-scale amendments to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, provided for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment to enter into the record?
No comments, Mayor.
Excellent. Colleagues, questions, comments, motions?
Move acceptance.
Seconded properly by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 13.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 13.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-08A8, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, changing the zoning classification of land from commercial Parkway and office residential to Parkway Commerce Plan Unit Development, writing for conflicts, severability, and effective date. The proposed ordinance has been updated to change the name of the PUD.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on 13.03?
Mayor, we did receive one comment on this item, that that comment was included in the information distributed and posted.
Excellent. All right, any questions, comments, motions?
Move acceptance.
Seconded.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.04, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 13.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-12, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an NOR-3 office residential and C-2 general commercial on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflict and severability, and provided an effective date.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No comments, Mayor.
Excellent. Colleagues, questions, comments, motions?
Move approval.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second?
That was Commissioner Bryant, but the Mayor Pro Tim seconds.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification. Motion's been made by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.05, Madam Attorney.
Item number 13.05 is the first and only public hearing on the ordinance number 20-Z-13, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an university transition on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflict and severability, and provided an effective date.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, colleagues, any questions, comments, motions?
Move acceptance.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.06, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 13.06 is the first of two public hearings on the Canopy Development Agreement. The second public hearing is scheduled for May 13, 2020, at 5 o'clock PM, and will be conducted by Communications Media Technology or in the City Commission chambers at City Hall. No action except, no action is required as a second public hearing is forthcoming at this time, only the public hearing.
So, Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we did have one comment on this item. It was included in what was distributed and posted. The comment was in opposition to the item.
Okay. Any comments, questions from my colleagues?
Move approval of staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, there's no action.
Oh, there's no, oh, okay.
This is the first public hearing.
It's just to hold the public hearing today. I will, you can hold your motion till the next public hearing.
All right.
All righty. And finally, 13.07, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. The final item for public hearing is item number 13.07, the first and only public hearing on the adoption of the amended FY 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan and the FY 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we received two comments on this item, both received prior to our deadline, so they were distributed and posted, both supportive of the item.
Thank you.
Move acceptance. Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have anything else coming for us at the public hearing?
No, sir.
Excellent. City Manager, anything from your shop before the public hearing?
No, sir.
Excellent. We have no other business, therefore we stand adjourned.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, sir. Commissioner Richardson.
A technology issue. I was on a Zoom meeting yesterday, and they used, on the laptop, it's the circle to the right, next to the leave meeting button. If you want to have us vote on the screen, you can actually, it's called polling.
Oh.
And they used that, and we voted on each item using that polling. If you want to have Harold look into that.
You know what? We'll have to check that out. That's a great suggestion.
Okay. That was it.
Have to play with this a little bit, huh?
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you. Appreciate it, Commissioner Richardson. Any other comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'd like to wish my friend and all-star assistant city manager Wayne Tetter a very happy birthday.
We got to sing.
Oh, yeah, we got to sing. We got to sing.
Happy birthday, Wayne.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Wayne. Happy birthday to you.
That'll teach you to have a birthday on a virtual call.
Thank you, everyone. Much appreciated.
I think my microphone went out on that one, I'm sure.
Happy birthday, Wayne.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
That, under the governor's executive orders, all the bars are closed, so you got to stay home.
That's never a problem with me.
Hey, Wayne, help put a hero on me.
All right, everybody, be safe. Great to see everybody. Wonderful meeting. We stand adjourned.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Great job.